We're going to call the meeting to order, please. This is the zoning board of appeals meeting Thursday, January 12th, 2023, 7:00 PM. First on the agenda is the approval of minutes dated November 10th, 2022.
We approve the minutes for November 10th, 2022.
A second, any discussion? If not, all in favor? Next, we have two invoices from Tetra Tech that's helping us with that project. We'll do these one separately. There's one for $1,755.
We don't pay that or anything.
No, they date that comes out of there, the money that they've charged.
Make a motion to approve the payment to Tetra Tech for $1,755.
A second?
A second.
And there's another one, too, those.
Yeah.
A motion, a second, any discussion on the first one? If not, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that's unanimous. And we do have the second one. That's for $135.
I'll make a motion to approve the invoice for $135 to Tetra Tech.
A second, that's a second, any discussion? If not, all of us in favor?
Aye.
7:03? Oh, I'm sorry. We do have a ZDA calendar for the year.
Did it put it down, did you say? Motion, motion to approve the proposed 2003 zoning board appeals meeting schedule? Second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that's unanimous. Okay, first on the agenda is the continued hearing of Rick Donadio, 339 Linwood Street. Rick's here, and he also has a new petition in here as well. First one, we don't have to read because we've already. So the second one. Town of Abington zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, January 12th, 2023, at 7:04 PM at the Abington Town Offices, 500 Clintwick Way. On the petition of Richard Donadio, 339 Linwood Street, for a variance under section 175-47-A. Entrances and exit points, section 175-47-B2, second driveway. The property is located on Assessor's Map 13, Lot 76, in the R40. Do you want to come forward?
Sure.
Thanks. Just bring us up to Gayard. I know you gave us a more detailed plan.
Yes.
On that first, that first request. The first request is for a variance to allow a 19-foot front yard setback and a special permit for accessory structure over 875 square feet in your building and garage, basically.
Correct.
And we'd ask for a more detailed plan of elevations.
Right, that was November 10th, and I got continued in last month. I got continued again.
Does anybody have any questions?
Why do you withdraw?
What's that?
Why do you, why do you withdraw?
I didn't withdraw.
You didn't withdraw.
We just, what's it say? 339 Linwood. We, we demand a. Please, let me get this.
He's looking at a building garage, 960.
Oh, the continuum, okay, I see.
Yes.
I apologize.
That's all right.
What size garage doors are going to be on this?
Um, eight by nine.
Eight by nine?
Yeah.
Both doors?
Yes.
So we're going to add, act on the first?
Yeah.
Petition first and then?
Yes, if you want, if you want to continue first.
Have you spoken to your neighbors or butters?
Yes, I have.
Any issues come up?
Uh, no, actually, I spoke to a bunch of them. I have their names actually right here. The other two are in the audience today. These are all the ones I've spoken to.
Anybody else? This is his butters that he's spoken to? According, according to what I asked was, there was.
There's only voted appeals numbers, and I am requesting relief on 175-29-2 for a 19-foot front yard setback on the side of the property in Catherine Drive. I am also requesting a special permit under 175-26-C for a garage of more than 875 square feet. I have spoken with the following property butters and provided building drawings and bought plan. They have no objection to the proposed garage addition. Thank you for attention to this matter, signed by Scott Piper, Leo Gomes, Paul Higgins, John Hagerty, Paul Hagerty, Anthony, I forget the last name, he's at 352 Industry, Denise Mulligan, and then somebody at 342 West Street.
Will the existing driveway garage meet up with the new driveway and drive it right through the whole building?
You, yeah, you could drive through, yes.
So you will be able to do that?
You will.
Will there be a door between the existing building and the new?
Uh, there'll be some sort of opening. I don't know if it's going to accommodate a car at this point.
Okay.
Through the, there will be a, an opening, I don't know how high the head will be with the roof line in the back of the garage.
Okay. In your original scale, there was a shed where you had a driveway, and that's being just removed completely?
No, it's being moved to another product, property most likely.
Okay.
Unless it doesn't make the transfer, it will be removed completely.
Okay. The only other question I have is the layout of the property itself. In adding this garage to behind your property.
Yep.
Water flow as far as raining and stuff like that, is there a pooling process, or do you have hills?
Uh, no, it's, it's basically almost completely flat.
Almost flat?
Yeah.
Okay. So are you worried at all about drainage issues from the new driveway out to Catherine Drive at all?
Uh, no.
No, there won't be any pooling of water?
No, if I have to, I'll put in a dry well.
Okay.
But I don't even think that's going to be an issue.
Okay. Based on the plans you provided, the roof, and you'll have gutters off that, brushing into the grass, correct?
Yes.
Okay, both front and both sides, correct?
Yes.
Okay. That's it for me, sir.
Anybody else have questions?
Yeah. No.
Okay, so I may absolutely just step down and see if there's any.
Sure.
The public, does anybody in the public have any comments, questions? Yes, if you could come up, name and address, please.
Hi, my name's Maureen Schmidt. I live right next door to Rick, and I do want to know where the shed's going. Just because there's a lot of dwellings in a small area, and I live right next door. And so I know you didn't get a, give an answer, and I just was wondering, where's it going to be?
It'll probably go near your side of the fence.
Like, where, is going to be enough space?
Yeah.
Are you going to take down a lifeguard station thing that overlooks the fence if you move it?
Maybe.
I would like you to, so I can have some privacy.
What, what's the, what's the issue with the light?
Here's a lifeguard station on the shed. So it's over the fence.
Okay. So if you move the shed, you still have to be in compliance with the setbacks for that as well? So you can't be too close to your property.
Yeah, because the fence already is, okay.
Anything else?
No.
Anybody else have any questions, comments? No more questions of the applicant? If not, we can have a motion to close the hearing.
Motion to close the hearing, 339 Linwood?
You can't make it, you can't make it, but you're not the.
Oh, that's right, I apologize.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to close the hearing for, for public comment.
Is there a second?
Listen.
A second, any discussion? If not, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that's unanimous.
I keep forgetting my power.
So we have a variance and a special permit on this one. For the variance. Prove those certain things, and I think at the last meeting, you went through the, through the criteria.
Right.
Make a motion?
We're going to do them separate.
Yeah, we do, I think we do the variance and the special permit on this one separately, and then we'll take up the next petition separately as well, so.
Okay.
So why don't we start with the variance, if somebody wants to make a motion on the variance?
I make a motion to accept the variance under 175-29-2 to allow a 19-foot set, foot front yard setback for Richard Don, what's his name?
Donadio.
Donadio, sorry.
Sorry.
Of 339 Linwood Street.
Okay, and just reference the plan, the plan.
According to the plans that we are.
Proposition plan date is 9/14/2022, is that?
Yeah.
That's the, that's the plan, okay.
It's dated, what was it, 9/14?
9/14/2022.
Second motion?
Second, any discussion? If not, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Can I, can I just say one thing? Did you guys read what the building inspector wrote about this? Just, just so you can read about it.
Well, this, that's on the second one, though. We have, that's on the, the one with the driveway, Rich.
All right.
Yeah. This is just on the, the first application, so.
Okay.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so that's unanimous. Then we have the special permit for an accessory structure over 875 square feet.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the special permit under section 17, uh, 17, 175-26-C for an accessory structure over 875 square feet at the property located on the Assessor's Map 13, Lot 76, in the R40 zone.
In compliance with the plans.
In compliance with the plans that we have submitted for 1, 11/9, 11/9/22.
I second the motion.
A second, any discussion? If not, all of us in favor? Aye, opposed, that's unanimous. Now we have the second, which is for the driveway. You want me to wait?
Yeah.
So you can come up again, because we're going to go through the whole process again, just explain what this is.
So initially, we didn't think I'd need relief for a second driveway. There seems to be a little confusion. So the building commissioner recommended that I ask for relief for the second driveway while I'm going through the process.
Yeah, I think there was a, a question as to whether or not you actually need it.
Right, because, because it was two different streets. So basically, I'm just asking for relief so it doesn't become a problem after it gets done.
Yeah.
And the driveway is on the plant, the law plan that you guys have.
So again, going through the criteria that you need for a variance. Circumstances relating to soil conditions shape a topography that especially affect the land and structure. Due to circumstances, especially affecting the land and structure, legal enforcement would cause some sort of a hardship, financial or otherwise. Can you just?
Well, I can't, the way the garage is on the corner, I can't connect it to the front driveway to make it one driveway. I mean, I, I guess I could pave up the whole side of the garage, but that would look kind of funny if I was to do that, to connect, to make the two driveways connect.
Yeah.
To get to the back doors of the garage.
If it's because you're on the, a corner, one of the.
Yeah.
Any questions? Okay, so I'm going to ask you to sit down again and see if there's any, anybody in the public want to make any comments on this particular application? Okay, if not, on the back here, yes. That's okay.
My name is Linda Dammie, and I live across the street from Rick. What did the building inspector find, or did he find something?
He didn't find anything. He, he recommended that Mr. Donadio come in and do a variance.
Yeah.
Just because the bylaw is kind of ambiguous, in his opinion at least, that.
Oh, okay, so.
Without it, he wouldn't be able to build that additional driveway.
But there was an inspection and everything was fine?
Yeah, well, he doesn't go, no, the building inspector hasn't inspected it yet. He just reviewed the application.
He was just, he was just concerned about the access to the road.
Oh, yes, yeah.
For the new garage.
Yeah, the curb, because he's going to have to get a curb, I guess, is what.
Okay, I understand.
But that's on Mr. Donadio to do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Anything else? You have a motion?
We, we close the discussion of this matter to the public?
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that's unanimous. How about beyond the application itself?
Seems to me, I thought we were on two different streets. Doesn't happen.
What's that?
I said where it's on two different streets, the way I read it, doesn't seem like you need to have it, but for safety's sake.
I, he's, I think he's doing it because the building inspector's not going to let him go forward development, so.
Yes, I think.
I agree, I'm not sure.
Better safe than sorry.
Yeah.
At this point. I'll make a, a motion to approve the petition of Richard Donadio, 339 Linwood Street, for a variance under 175-47-A, entrances and exit points. 175-47-B2, second driveway. The property is located on Assessor's Map 13, Lot 76, in the R40 zone.
I'll second that motion if you just want to make it in conformity with the.
In conformity with the, the site plan that was submitted.
Great, and a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? If not, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that's unanimous. Aye, and you decide, sir.
Good luck with that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, should we make an announcement about 155?
No, when we get there, we'll make the announcement.
Okay.
We can't do anything until we.
All right, I'm just saying that everyone's.
Because they, we have to open the hearing, Rich, in our lap, so.
I thought, I thought, um, can you just cancel it?
No, it's not canceled, no, you have to take it, you have to take the vote to continue it, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good luck.
What time is it?
Okay, next on the agenda is Michael Emery and Denise Moore. So we have two here, right? Yes. So the first one, does it continue? No, no, I'm sorry. The town of Abington zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, December 8th, 2022, at 7:10 PM at the Abington Town Offices, 500 Clintwick Way, Abington, on a petition of Michael Emery, 147 Prospect Street East in Massachusetts, for a special permit under 175-32-I to raise an enclosed sunroom and construct an in-law apartment at 77 Battery Street. The property is located on Assessor's Map 60, Lot 191, in the R20 zone. Wait. And this one you wanted to withdraw, correct?
Yes, sir.
Because there was a filing error, he had to submit that second application, so he's looking to withdraw this one and.
Oh, that's, that's what, sorry, I apologize.
So do we have a motion to allow Mr. Emery to withdraw this without?
I'll make a motion to allow Mr. Emery, Michael Emery, 147 Prospect Street East in Mass for a special permit under 175-32-I to raise an enclosed sunroom and construct an in-law apartment at 77 Battery Street. Property is located on Assessor's Map 60, Lot 191, in the R20 zone. And to make that withdrawal without prejudice.
Do you have a second?
Second, sir.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now we have the town of Abington zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, January 12th, 2023, at 7:06 PM at the Abington Town Offices, 500 Clintwick Way, Abington, on a petition of Denise Moore, 77 Battery Street, for a special permit under 175-32-I and a finding under Chapter 48, Section 6, to raise the enclosed sunroom and construct a 28 by 22-foot in-law apartment at 77 Battery Street. The property is located on Assessor's Map 60, Lot 191, in the R20 zone. Tell us a little bit about what you're, what Denise is looking to do.
Denise is, Denise is getting up in her retirement age. She lives at the house by herself. She's lived there for over 40 years. She has a daughter, son-in-law, and a grandson that she'd really like to move in to help her with the house and pay the bills. But she'd also like her own private area, so, you know, she can have her own space, too. That's why she came up with the idea of possibly putting an in-law in the back of the house.
And you're expanding the footprint of the sunroom, correct? This is the.
Yes, yes, the sunroom is 16 by 16, so it's that little of a, so we're going up to 600 and, I think, 16 square feet.
Which is why the Section 6 finding comes in, it's making a non-conforming structure more non-conforming. So we use a Section 6 finding for that. Questions from the board?
Well, it's a one-story, so we don't have to worry about it being more than the existing house. What'd you say, it was, it was non-conforming?
It's non-conforming, and it's, yeah.
It doesn't seem like it's overload. They don't need a variance at all, right?
No, it's just a finding, and as long as the change is not substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use to the neighborhood, then you can feel comfortable in a Section 6 finding.
It is a, it's a ground floor, it's not a two-story addition, so. Doesn't seem like it's going to be overbearing.
Any other questions, comments from the board?
Was anything written up from the town?
No.
Nothing?
Nothing at all. Do they need a variance?
No, because it's, it's a Section 6 finding instead of a variance.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure I was. 20%. So I did there.
Any other questions, comments at this point from the board? If not, I'm going to open it up to the public. Anybody from the public have any input on this petition? Anything else, Mike?
I don't think so.
Anybody else, anything else for Mike? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody have a motion to close the hearing?
Make a motion to close the hearing to the public.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that's unanimous. So we have a finding, and then we have a special permit, which is for the in-law use.
Do we have to provide a, not suggestion, but just direct them to get a, to go to the town for the in-law apartment?
Yes, that, that comes. Does that come out of the building office anyways, Bill?
Yes, yeah, they send that out every year, too.
Okay, we just remind him of that when we approve it, if we approve it.
That's not, yeah, but this client.
This client actually. Yeah. So are we going to do those two things separately?
Yeah, we can do them separately.
I'll make a motion to approve the petition of Denise Moore, 77 Battery Street, for a special permit, 175-32-I, to raise the enclosed sunroom and construct a 28 by 22 in-law apartment at 77 Battery Street. The property is located on Assessor's Map 60, Lot 191, in the R20 zone, as described in the documents we received.
Plans, yeah. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? If not, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that's unanimous, and then you have the finding.
Right, I will make a motion to approve the petition of Denise Moore, 77 Battery Street, for a finding under Chapter 48, Section 6, to raise enclosed sunroom and construct a 28 by 22 in-law apartment at 77 Battery Street. The property is located on Assessor's Map 60, Lot 191, in the R20 zone.
Denise, have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? If not, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that's unanimous. Thank you.
Good luck.
Bill, Mike, Bill has something for you. And just as we were discussing, Denise, every year you have to file an affidavit with a building office just saying that the person who's living in the in-law is a relative, yeah.
Good luck.
Thank you. You want to do that 155 first street? Yeah, but they, they want to get.
If I can be thrown off, anyone can, so.
So we're going to, we're going to take up the, actually, I'm going to recuse myself at this point, so.
So who's this, which three of us?
Bob, I think, is recusing himself.
I'm also recusing myself.
So it's going to be the three of us.
Yeah.
Mike, you want to step up, sir?
Yeah.
I'm going. Don't shut the door.
I won't.
You got to come back.
Yeah, don't run away. Don't run away.
So we continue it to February 9th, all right?
Where are we on the? So this goes a continue hearing, yep.
Is we going to take this out of order?
Yeah, just so, because we think.
Yeah, we're taking this out of order.
It's just for that, I mean, all we're doing is continuing it. All right, we're going to open the, we're going to move to the petition of Sean J. Reynolds of 19 Child Street for a variance. Sean has requested that we continue this to February 9th. He's asking for a continuance because his wife has COVID, and the doctor has said that he should quarantine until after this date. So he's asked for a continuance. I'm going to read the petition. I'm going to read the petition, so it's in the record. The town of Abington zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, December 8th, 2022 at 7:25 PM at the Abington Town Office, 500 Glenwood Way, Abington on the petition of Sean J. Reynolds, 19 Child Street, for a variance under zoning bylaw 175-29 for a 49 frontage variance for a driveway into a lot at 155 Birch Street. The property is located on Assessors Map 54, Lot 29, in the R20 Zone. Do we have a motion to continue?
I gotta make a motion to continue due to person not being here due to illness.
February 9th at 7:05 PM.
February 9th, 7:05 PM. All right?
Check my data.
Yep.
Yeah, I just looked it up. It sounds, yeah.
It was on Facebook. I know they sent something out. I don't, I do appreciate everyone here showing up, and I hope you show up to the next meeting. There's nothing we really can do about it right now, but to continue it. Okay?
I wonder if I could ask you a question, though.
No, we can't answer. We really, we can't, we can't open up the hearing just yet. We have to wait for it to start.
It's actually a power continuance. Is there a precedent on how many times you can continue?
That was a question that I brought up, and what do we have, 60 days up to?
So there's a time limit, a legal time limit that the state says is the number of days from the time the applicant files to the time that the board has to make a decision. Okay? In this instance, the applicant has filed an extension of 60 days, so that would get us to February and if needed, the March hearing. If a decision isn't made by then, then you would get what's called a constructive grant, and no one wants that.
We appreciate you.
No one ever wants a constructive grant issue. It's embarrassing. So the board can always deny the request for a continuance if it, if it looked like someone was playing games.
It's been done before on this property, with this 155, I think the last time it was, the board loaded to, you know, to allow the.
Last time, so the board did not have a quorum.
Yes.
Right, because, again, I was sick at the time, so that, that's the reason why.
149 Birch Street, I'm just interested in knowing how much longer this is going to continue to go on.
We hope to get it to the next meeting, bearing any, you know, mishaps, but we, we like to get this done, too, so we do appreciate everyone coming up, and we do apologize, but I mean, again, I was sick the last time, and this is going on now, so.
I was there as well, so.
So, I mean, it's, it's not done on purpose at all.
No, I understand. I'm just interested in knowing how much longer we can continue.
Yes, yep, and again, we will make, you know, knock on wood, we will get it done the next meeting.
And then we do have the option to, if there was something wrong at the next meeting, we could do a special meeting.
We could, I guess we could do that, right?
Correct.
Because we'd like to get this one over, too, so.
Yeah.
We like, I mean, you're all here for a reason, you want to be heard, and we appreciate that, and we, you know, a lot of people don't show up, so that's a good thing, but we're not trying to brush this under. It's, it's, it's what it is.
All right, I understand that.
But I do appreciate the question, and thank you for the answers.
Thank you.
And just know that we are, you know, we're willing able to do this, so.
There's a, there's a motion, we need a second.
I'll second the motion.
I got one question. Under the previous time, when it was last done, I think it was like around 2003, they went through this, those records available, if someone was to come in through the open meeting law?
I would believe yes. I mean, they could, they could get, they could get that information on any meeting that we have, right?
Town clerk has records of everything.
Yep. All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, I got to close it. We really shouldn't be talking about it, but it was information that you really needed, too, though, so, all right.
All right, so we have a, we have a motion and a second. All right, all those in favor?
Aye. And that's to continue till?
February 9th, 2023 at 7:05 PM.
7:05 PM, okay.
First one on the agenda next month.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Send the other guys in, hey?
Yeah, make sure they don't run away.
You knew half of these people. He said you knew half of the people.
Yeah, that's why I had to. Well, sir, I hope we did it correctly.
It's up to you.
We did the best.
Yeah.
It's all that matters.
So let's continue without prejudice.
Guys, we didn't say without prejudice. Maybe we should.
It's a continuance, right?
It's a continuance. Okay. Thank you for bringing that up. No, we just want to cover all the.
Yeah.
Make sure I wasn't screaming. That's right. All right.
All right, so now we're going to do Bruno Xavier. So we have the town of Abington zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, December 8th, 2022 at 7:15 PM at the Abington Town Offices, 500 Glenwood Way, Abington on the petition of Bruno Xavier at 488 Hancock Street for a special permit under Section 175-32-I to convert basement to an in-law apartment at 488 Hancock Street. The property is located on Assessors Map 43, Lot 45, in the R20 Zone. Can you come, come on, Mr. Xavier, just tell us what you're looking to do? Name and address.
Good night. My name is Bruno Xavier, address 48 Hancock Street, Abington. So I'd like to do close to 600 square feet in-law apartment in the basement. The reason is because our family, our parents usually come from Brazil, usually spend between three and six months with us here, so with a three-bedroom upstairs, it's getting smaller. That's why I like to apply for the, the in-law apartment.
So it's a relative that's going to be renting, right?
No.
A relative?
No.
It is a relative or not a relative?
No, no rented.
Oh, he's not renting.
Not renting, not renting.
It's a, it's a person.
Family.
A relative or a family, a direct family?
Family, family.
Family.
It's not going to be all year round, so basically, our parents usually come here between three and six months.
Family.
Your parents come up and stay in.
I'm sorry, I.
Sorry.
Okay. So you understand, if you were, if this is granted, your family can come up and use it, and when they're gone, it only can be used by other family members. You can't rent it out.
Yes.
You understand that?
I went to, with you.
So, and they've talked all about that?
They talk about it.
Okay.
So a family member is defined as mother, father, sister, brother, son, daughter, uncle, aunt, grandmother, grandfather, grandchild, and/or their spouses, so as long as one of those folks living there, that's fine.
I understand.
Okay. And when you sell the property, this doesn't get transferred, the new owner would have to come in and request the same.
Okay, I agree.
Any other questions? Well, comments?
The, the question that the building inspector had before about the in-law being the same size as the, as the house, I'm trying to look to see what this house looks like, see.
It doesn't look like it.
It don't look like it.
Okay. It doesn't look like it. There's a big space over here that's unfinished.
It's unfinished.
If you look on the far left of it.
This space over here is unfinished.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's open.
That's where the furnace is and.
It looks like it's 360 square feet.
Okay. All right, so it's under that?
Yeah.
All right. What type of house is, your house, is it two, two-story?
Two-story, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions from board members?
I'm good. Mr. Junior, yeah.
I'm going to open it up to the floor. Anybody in the audience have any questions, comments on this petition? Okay, doesn't look so. Okay, so you're all set.
Thank you.
You have a motion to close the hearing?
Close the hearing on this matter?
I'll second that motion.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, as unanimous. We can act on a petition.
I'll make a motion to approve the petition of Bruno Xavier at 488 Hancock Street for a special permit under 175-32-I to convert basement to an in-law apartment at 488 Hancock Street. The property is located on Assessors Map 43, Lot 45, in the R20 Zone, as shown on the plan submitted.
I'll second that. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, as unanimous. Okay, Xavier, so you're all set.
Thank you. Good lucks.
Bill has something for you. Next on the agenda is Mark Laramie. Town of Abington zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, December 8th, 2022 at 7:00 PM at the Abington Town Offices, 500 Glenwood Way, Abington on the petition of Mark Laramie II at 89 Presidential Drive. The variance is under Section 175-25 conformity to regulation and under Section 175.29 rear setback of 23 feet 5 inches and front setback of 28 feet 6 inches to allow a portion of the rear structure to be 23 feet 5 inches to the rear setback line and 28 feet 6 inches to the front setback line at 89 Presidential Drive. The property is located on Assessors Map 36, Lot 35, in the R20 Zone. Good evening.
Good evening, board. Yep, Chairman Burma, members of the board, my name is Philip Baker with Rock of Design. I'm here on behalf of Mark and Laramie to look at your, his set of plans we have in front of you. So essentially, what's happening is we're a conforming structure in the R20 Zone in regards to lot area and actually all the setbacks. Our hardship right now is we have a very large lot, and we're tucked in the very far left-hand corner of the lot. So if you kind of zoom out in that plot plan, you can see that the lot actually is very grand, and when they say the building, we were tucked in this left-hand corner, so anything you do to the house, regardless of rear, side, front, you're going to have to ask for a variance because it's in that front left-hand corner, so it's kind of landlocked, so to speak, in that front corner. There is an existing 10 by 11 deck in the rear that's off the back, so our intent was to bump off the back of the structure 10 feet, the same width as the deck or the same depth as the deck, and build a two-story. So essentially, Mark's family's growing, they want to stay in Abington, they love their house, love the location, the neighbors, but they need more space. And really what it is right now, it's a box colonial, as you see right there, those are the existing elevations, and we're trying to kind of modernize and make the house look and feel more up to date, so we're looking to kind of add some, I've had a farmer's porch, some, some dormers in the attic roofline to kind of dull up the front a little bit with some metal, metal fenestration, and then the rear is where we're doing the two-story addition to add an office space since Mark and Melissa both work remote after COVID, so they're staying remote permanently, so need more space in the interior. As I said, they have, you know, a couple of kids, and they just need more, more space on the interior, so first floor is more kitchen expansion, dining and office and a mudroom, and then the second floor is an extra bedroom, couple of bathrooms, and along with the farmer's porch out front. So as I said, it's, you know, it's kind of a tight, a tight lot, even though it's a large lot, as is conforming, it's 40,019 square feet, but based upon where the location of the house actually sits, that's kind of our hardship, is that anything we do, we have to apply, and we really can't do much to the house, so we're trying to kind of work on what we have and make it, you know, nice enough and not overbuild. The addition's not grand by any means, it's a 10-foot addition off the back of the house, and the farmer's porch just has nothing on it, it's just a farmer's porch, just open with a couple of deck railings and posts. So we'd love to have your feedback and, and get the board's feedback.
Questions, comments? It is an odd-shaped lot.
It is, yeah, and, you know, it's, it's a huge lot, and we're just in this little, little death area in the corner there.
You, you just want to add a little bit more to the sides. You don't want to go the other way.
Correct.
Correct.
You don't want to go towards the streets.
Yeah, because the problem is the right-hand side is the garage, and if you bump on the right-hand side, you wouldn't be able to connect the first floor without going off the back, and then you're back to the same thing, asking for a variance again, so we're trying to kind of keep the side yard intact as is, and they're really not much of a rear yard anyways, so we're kind of just using it as, like, they kind of spend most of their time out front, so with the kids, they play out front, they're on the street, so with the farmer's porch, they can have, you know, rights and oversee their kids as they're playing in the front yard and the side yard, like, as it stands right now, they kind of are in the backyard and the side yard as it is, so as I said, we're trying to kind of keep the, the beauty of the house, modernize and make it nicer, and not do anything that's so extreme, we're trying to do something that's, you know, nice but not grand.
And it's a conforming?
It's conforming currently, yes.
And you're going to make it non-conforming?
Correct, yes.
But I can see, I can see the, I can see the idea, though, because all you want to do is add a couple more feet to it and get more room out of it, that way you don't have to move.
Correct, and the biggest thing, too, is, you know, right now we do have a deck in the rear, so, you know, I'm not sure how the Abington bylaws exactly work, but we always, we're standing the decks that are conforming, the setback, so there is a deck right now that's back that is 10 feet off the house, so if you, that's where our, kind of our thought was, we're not going anywhere past that existing deck that's there, so we're maintaining that line as our no-build area and building it straight up as a two-story box off the back.
And how old is this house?
89.
89. All the homes are pretty similar styles, we're trying, as I said, you know.
Beautiful area.
Yeah, trying to change the style a bit, everyone kind of a cookie-cutter houses, so.
Yeah, that wouldn't really, you know, make it different in the neighborhood, that's probably.
No, correct.
Right align with everybody else.
Right.
Not doing anything too crazy.
You're adding two new bathrooms?
Correct, yes, on the second floor, yep. Laundry area, right now the laundry's in the basement, we're going to move that up to have it on the second floor, just make it easier for all the kids to not be kicking the basket down the, down the stairs all the time.
Yep. It's a great idea, though, if you want to stay, you know.
This is the option.
Yeah, instead of moving.
Based on the plans, you're following the same siding on the addition that you have on the current home, or you're changing it up?
So the siding in the house, some is hardy board on some positions of it, and the other is cedar, probably go to a more modern side, you know, whatever hardy board type of material, but I would go with the recommendation of the contractor.
Okay. Yeah, it's just, sometimes it's very odd, you know, go from conforming to non-conforming, you know, kind of opens our eyes a little bit, but we can see what you're trying to do there.
There's really not anything you can do when you look at it.
Like, if, say, if the house was flipped and mirrored, then we would bump off the right-hand side, but.
Exactly, you have the garage on one side, so it's kind of.
Correct, you don't have the luxury of bumping off the right to maximize because you can't get there, without walking upstairs and then walk back downstairs.
Couldn't add onto the kitchen or anything?
No.
Any more? Any other questions, comments from the board? Have any input from the folks out in the audience? Yes, Paul?
We're in favor.
Okay, thank you. Name and address?
Yeah, George. Just to have it on record.
Paul Mollick, 152 Presidential Drive, and we have some other neighbors here, too, if they want to come up.
You're in favor, Paul?
Yes.
Thank you.
Rich Testa, 121 Presidential Drive, on the immediate butter, if you're facing the home to the left on the other side of McKinley. There's very few things, you, you can't pick your neighbors, and this is a neighbor I'd like to keep, so we're certainly in favor of it, you know, it's, it'd be a shame to see him move out of town, and, you know, we, we support it.
Excellent. Thank you.
No.
Couple of dormers here.
Yeah.
Find this porch over.
Any changes?
No.
Couple of dormers here.
Yeah. Anybody else? Okay, so we'll bring it back to the board and look for a motion to close the hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, as you may know. Look for a motion on the petition itself.
Yeah, sure. I make a motion to accept the petition of Mark LeBeere at 89 President's Drive for a variance under 175-25 conformity to regulation under 175-29 rear setback of 23.5 feet and a front setback of 28.6 feet to allow a portion of the rear structure to be 23 and a half feet to the rear setback line and 28.6 to the front setback line at 89 President's Drive. The property is located on Accessors Map 36, Lot 32, in the R40 zone. And this would obviously be built in accordance to the plans that were submitted.
And it's, I'm sorry, second?
Second the motion?
Second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Good luck. Good luck. Good plan.
Thank you.
What about the Catholic spot? Because we're not very fans of
The fallen opposite, yeah, right.
It's all I remember from the two of you, but through the three years I did the job.
Next on the agenda is a Francis Lynch, 54 Platt Street. Town of Abington zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, January 12th, 2023 at 7:25 PM at the Abington Town Offices, 500 Winwood's Way, Abington, on the petition of Francis Lynch, 54 Platt Street for a variance under Section 175-29 to allow a five-foot side yard setback to construct a 12 by 20 accessory building and define it under Chapter 48, Section 6, at 54 Platt Street. The property is located on Accessors Map 54, Lot 12, in the R20 zone. How are you?
How you doing?
Good. Just explain a little what you're looking to do here?
Yeah, so we're looking for a five-foot side setback variance for essentially an oversized shed. We don't have a shed right now, we have a large pool, lot of yard accessories. And then my wife also has a ton of photography equipment and props. So my basement's pretty much full, so I'm looking for a shed just to store all this extra equipment that we have. And unfortunately, there, we have an oversized deck as well as a large tree in the middle of our yard. And our plot is already undersized, so no matter where we put it, it's gonna need a variance due to the back or the side.
Can you go back to the other one? Oh, I'm sorry. You couldn't move it back, like, behind the deck and then not have to worry about it?
That's the, so the deck, that plot's not great, but there's a tree right where the 78 is,
Yeah.
is a tree right there, and it's our only shade in the summer. Like I said, we have the pool. And then if we go beyond the tree, we need a backyard variance because now it'll be up against our back neighbor's yard. So no matter where we put it, and obviously on the right, you can't put, we can't fit it there because of the pool.
Yep.
How big is this?
It's gonna be 12 by 20.
12 by 20? I just don't see any pictures of it, is it prefab or?
Uh, nope, so I'll be building it with my uncle. It'll be on a son of two foot-ins.
It's like a shed-style roof?
It'll be a removable structure, so, I'm sorry.
It's a shed-style roof, just a
Shed-style roof, yep. There, I, there should be pictures of the
Well, there's, yeah.
Just want to make sure I was reading that right. Looking at it right. No plumbing?
Well, he's not building a house, so I guess we don't need stamps, right?
No plumbing.
No plumbing at all?
Nope.
Okay.
So right now there's a, I call it my grilling deck. So we have the deck off the pool, then we have another step-down deck.
Yep.
That's about six feet, so we're gonna be removing that. It's, it's, there's no fencing or anything, it's just a small little platform.
Okay.
So that'll get removed and it'll go in that little slot, which is right behind that left fence there. I took, I sent pictures in.
Does it go over the fence line, the top of the fence? Is it taller than the fence?
It will be, what, eight?
Eight, I think, eight feet.
Eight feet.
So it's one foot over the fence then?
Yeah.
It's the roof structure or anything else will be over the fence?
Yeah, by, by two feet. Uh, it's gotta be more than that.
Yeah, I sent pictures in, but I don't know if they're, if they got here.
Oh, you break, you had pictures?
Yeah.
I just see drawings.
I emailed them to you yesterday, I know, it was late, but.
What were the pictures of?
Just the, where it's gonna go, the actual, actual pictures of the backyard.
Have you spoke to your buddies?
I'm sorry?
Have you spoken to your buddies? Any issues?
Nope.
No ones?
Nope. My, the, the only, the neighbor that it affects, he said, "Do your property, do whatever you want." Yeah, he was gonna write me a letter, but he just never
No, that's all, I just want to make sure you
Yeah, here we go, right here.
It's always good to talk to everybody, so.
I'm sorry, is the heading said, like, proof of payment?
Yeah, sorry, I just replied to the most recent email from you.
The mountain?
The mountain is great in the background, I didn't know we had a hill in Abington, that big for God's sake. I gotta climb that one.
See, as you can see there, there's the little small
Little pad, right?
Yeah. So it'll go right
So you're gonna take that out?
Yep, that'll be getting removed, and then I'm gonna move the stairs the other way, yeah.
So it's 20 feet going this way, and what's it this way?
It'll be 12 feet
12 feet?
Left to right, 20 back to front.
I see the tree you're talking about?
Yep.
That destined to fall on it, or? Hey, 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 hey! No, no, I'm saying if you move it, if you move it by, what we were talking about, if you move it by the tree, it's destined to fall.
See the size of that?
That's what I mean. It is a big tree.
And beyond that tree, again, that's our neighbor's backyard. So we get, we need a variance either way we put this. So
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Because it, in order for it to conform, it would have to go right dead smack in the middle where that fire pit is, which I mean, that's the middle of our yard, so.
And you need one that big?
I'm sorry?
You need a shed that big, is that?
We have a four-foot carousel horse, so, I mean.
Yep, that's an automatic yes.
Yeah.
Four feet of space is already used up, so you only have eight feet left for a photograph.
We moved from a 2,500 square foot house to a 1,300 square foot house.
Really?
And all of our stuff is still at our in-law's basement. And my basement's full already, so it's really
Before you know
As big as I can put, I'm gonna do that.
You're not cutting your corner, fuck.
It's my wife, not me.
Oh!
You were on public with that, you're a gutsy guy!
Did you know you'd be in video, right?
I know that.
Oh, man.
She said blame her, if it gets approved.
We'll be at, never mind. All right.
Where are you gonna grill now?
I'm sorry?
Where would you grill when you have the
I'd move up to the upper deck.
No.
Yeah. It's very, the upper deck's very big.
It looks like it's pretty
Yeah.
Let's keep it away from the building.
So as I pointed out, the gentleman was looking for a variance previously. There's things that we have to look at to make sure that you read the criteria if necessary. So what you have to prove to us is that there are circumstances relating to the soil conditions, shape or topography, which especially affect the land or structure in question, but which do not affect generally the zoning district in which the land or structure is located. And that due to the circumstances, especially affecting the land or structure, literal enforcement of the provisions of the zoning ordinance or bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise to the applicant. So can you give us a, maybe?
I'm sorry, I'm hard, I'm like, yeah, I'm deaf in my right ear, so I can't hear the hearing.
What do you need the shed for? Do you need it for storage?
You have to, you have to prove, you have to prove that there's a hardship, financial or otherwise, for us to be able to grant this. So you have to have a hardship, and you have to tell us what that hardship is.
You see, so I have the pictures of all my yard supplies. That's, I didn't take pictures, but all my pool stuff is still on top of my deck. So I have nowhere to put anything, my basement's full, as I said. So I need somewhere to store all this. And the hardship is my, I mean, the lot is already undersized, so in order to conform, it would have to go dead smack in the middle of my yard.
Where there's a tree.
I'm sorry?
Where there's a tree.
Where there's a tree.
Where there's a tree. Yeah.
Looks like it's kind of at an angle.
Yep, I'm gonna get to the audience in a second, sir. Any more questions or comments?
I'm all set.
I'm all set. So I'll open it up to the, sir, if you want to name an address, please?
Mike McCormick, 28 Thicket Street. I used to be on that side of the table years ago. When was the house built? And when did the zoning laws change as far as lot width goes? Do anybody have that kind of history? Because it looks like he's kind of impinged because of the width of the lot.
He's in an R20 zone, I'm not sure when that was, when that property went into the R20.
Yeah. It's been a lot of years for me too, so.
Yeah, it looks like it's, you know, a very small lot.
I'm just looking at, you know, looking at the pool in the house on the other side. This thing here is, you know, probably further away than the pool in the house from the scale.
It was built 1950. Then addition was put on '04. All right? So 1950, so, I mean, it's good.
And most of the zoning laws are the 70s.
Right.
Yeah.
So, definitely.
Yes, I think that might be this gentleman's hardship that he's looking for.
Thank you, Mike. Any other questions, comments from the public? Not looking, bring it back, close the hearing?
Make a motion to close the hearing?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Would you oppose?
What's your pleasure here, guys? I don't think this, I'm not sure why there's a request for a Section 6 finding. This is not altering the structure that's there now, so I don't think, I think we can deny that. I think the variance is what he's looking for because
Right. I agree.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it the lot's definitely, you know, very undersized, no garage.
And it's actually not a
No, yes, yeah, it's like a strange angle.
So if you put a garage off the house, you would be non-conforming with that most likely.
Yeah, exactly, if you're gonna add a garage to it, it'd be the same problem.
Yeah, there's no
Definitely needs storage, and we all not know that, in our own homes. Small house.
Don't talk about that. Don't talk about that.
Pre-existing deck and pool, so it's like
I got a dumpster coming tomorrow.
I can use it. I'll fill it though. I can do it. I would like to make a motion to approve the petition of Francis Lynch, 54 Platt Street for a variance under 175-29 to allow a five-foot set, five-foot side yard setback to construct a 12 by 20 accessory building at 54 Platt Street as described in the plans that were submitted. Property is located on Accessors Map 54, Lot 12, in the R20 zone. It's because we don't need a finding, right?
I don't think, I don't think we need a finding, right? The, it's, findings are having to do with the existing structure. This is not, this is not being put onto the existing structure, this is a separate
Completely. We didn't get any comments from the building department about this, did we?
No, we didn't, no. Yeah, we did.
We got two.
Reviewed, and application was reviewed.
Application was good. Okay, so there's nothing, no?
No comments other than that.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? What I'm gonna suggest maybe is that you withdraw the request for the finding. Ask us to let you withdraw that. I don't think you need it, I'm not sure why it was
I did, I just followed whatever I was told to write, so
Do you know why that was withdrawn, or?
So, withdraw the finding of an existing building, is that?
Yeah, because it's not, it's not an existing, you're building a new structure, it's not even altering the existing structure. This is a totally new accessory building, so. But I don't want to mess things up for you, so I'd rather have you withdraw that. And if you do need it, you can always come back to us with it.
Right.
So if that's okay, we'll allow you to ask us to allow you to withdraw it if that's
So you gotta stand right back up there?
And just request that you be allowed to withdraw without prejudice the request for the finding.
I request that withdraw without prejudice the finding?
Yes. Okay. Do we have a motion on that?
I'll make a motion to accept withdrawal for request of Francis Lynch, 54 Platt Street for a finding under Chapter 48-A-6 at 54 Platt Street. Property is located on Accessors Map 54, Lot 12, in the R20 zone. And the withdrawal would be without prejudice.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
All right, good luck. Good luck. Take care.
Can I get a copy of that video so I can have it?
You want the audio, you want the video, you want the audio.
It's gonna be
He'll pay for that price.
It's gonna be on YouTube, don't worry about it. Just send it over.
Just let us know how that worked out. I won't be a couch, that'll be the deck.
All right, last on the agenda is Anthony Quintiliani? Quintiliani?
Quinteviani, just the Quinteviani.
Town of Abington zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, January 12th, 2023 at 7:30 PM at the Abington Town Offices, 500 Winwood's Way, Abington on the petition of Anthony Quintiliani, 31 Thicket Street for a special permit under 175-26-C to allow an accessory building over 875 square feet, 1,080 square feet, at 31 Thicket Street. The property is located on Accessors Map 62, Lot 57, in the I-30 zone. I'm gonna call you Anthony, because I
Perfect, everyone calls me AQ to make it easy, so.
So if you could just tell us
Yeah, absolutely, so Anthony Quintiliani, 31 Thicket Street in Abington. So I am a conforming lot, and I did submit an accessory building, as you can see here on the drawing. For the town, I meet all variances from the right and rear of my property. I did actually get it surveyed, because it was not surveyed prior to. And when doing so, we found that shed and barn from the, or shed and fence from the other neighbors. So I have corrected that and moved that for them to make sure that we are within our boundaries here. And Chris approved this from the building side of things, but because I am asking for over the 875 square feet, that is why I'm here in front of you guys, looking for an additional roughly 200 square feet from the Section C 175-26 of 875 square feet. So I'm looking for roughly about 200 square feet of a variance.
And you're gonna use this as a garage, not a barn, or a garage?
Uh, so this will be a barn, not a garage, because a garage, as you can see in the drawings that I've given you, they are barn doors, they are not a garage door. The idea is I've been in the town as of February for 10 years, or like to stay.[1743.22] I just got married this past New Year's, so looking to build our family, but I do have, I'm going to call it, equipment and toys and things like that. So, for my neighbor's sake and for my sake, I would like the equipment inside of a building, but if we do stay for the long term, our goal is to put a, in addition, where we would add a garage, and that's where this is an accessory building of a barn, not a garage. But I do have a boat, I do have a tractor, I do have lawn mowers, I do have things like that that will not fit. I have no garage, I have no space, I have no nothing. So, this is the easiest accessory building to do versus a two-car garage and a master suite, which is the, and I'll be our goal on the actual structure of the house.
It's a nice-looking building, is this actually what it's going to be?
Yeah, that's the plan's...
Is that like a prefab, or is that a...
No, it'll be constructed. Drawings are, I, I do have a full set, but I think I did submit them in here as well. So, the, all the bottom would be all open, you would be able to go up to the top, and that would be just storage, there would be no kitchen, there would be no nothing, it would be storage for the second story there.
How do you get to the top, is there a ladder?
There's stairs in the backside of the, the barn.
The big question I like to ask is the access to the barn from the street. What are you going to do there, you going to put stone down, or?
So, right now, I currently have roughly halfway of stone, but as I'm building, and I'm not going to put stone, then just destroy it by putting a foundation, digging things up, so it will be finished. Landscaping, I did own a landscape business for about four years, so landscape is near and dear to my heart, so this would be aesthetically pleasing the way it looks, this would not be just a metal structure that is in the middle of an acre.
But you're not looking for a driveway all the way in there?
No, I would not put a driveway out there, it would be stone.
Yep.
So, to clarify, the shed encroachment and the fence encroachment have been moved onto your neighbor's properties?
Everything is on their existing property now.
So, it's been moved off yards?
Mm-hmm.
So, there is no non-conformity between the shed and the back and the side of that building?
Correct.
Correct?
Correct.
And have you spoken to all of your buddies?
I have, yes.
Any issues at all, my eyes?
I do have one neighbor that's behind me.
He's a very good neighbor, but... And notice we have good neighbors, because all the neighbors came out for all of our petitions. So, one more clarification?
Absolutely.
Your driveway for your existing home?
Mm-hmm.
Is it on the front or the side of the existing home, right now?
Uh, I did not show a picture, I used to have a U-shaped driveway.
Okay.
Uh, I did move that, and it is not a paved, it's millings right now, once again.
Okay.
I'm not going to pave something to rip it up in three years if we put an addition on, so... It's millings right now, but it is a six-car, you can fit, but I did go down to the building department before, I didn't change any curbing, I didn't change anything, that, the U-shaped driveway, I just made straight instead.
Okay.
It does go to the right of the house, I do have pictures on my phone, if you want to see them.
No, I just, I'm just asking, because I did not see a driveway at all on the plan, that's the reason why I'm asking, so...
Yes.
And why'd you pick that spot? Just to...
Uh, based on the layout, as you can see, I do not have the best shape of a plot, and so where I am looking to put a two-car garage, if you were to look on the structure of the existing home, it would be coming out to the right.
Yeah.
And so you typically would want your barn close to that, so if I went to the left side or the middle, it just wouldn't work. I plan on having kids and want them to run in a yard, so put it as far to the setback as I possibly could with variance within our, our neighbors there, to make sure everyone is adequate. Because as you can see, my house does not face the street in any way, shape, or form. It's a very weird-shaped property, I will say that.
Right. Are you running power out there?
There will be power, there will not be plumbing. Honestly, I would have done plumbing, but I would have to have a pump station, because gravity would not feed it, and I'm not dealing, I'm just not dealing with it.
Don't blame you.
Any other questions, comments?
I'm good, Mr. Chairman.
If not, Mr. McCormick, do you have any comments, questions?
Thank you.
Michael McCormick, 28 Thicket Street, right across the street from that. I, actually, this is the first time I've seen the plans and the, the drawing there. Looks like it's going to be attractive, I'm going to have to look out my front window and see it. So, it looks like it's attractive enough. I have a barn, he has a barn, there's other barns and garages in the neighborhood, so should fit right in. I like the barn door deal that you're doing there, so that fits right into the neighborhood, so...
Thank you.
I'm in favor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's nobody else out there, so we can close it to the floor, right here.
You think? I'll take a rest.
We have a motion to close the hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
And on the petition itself?
One of the nicest barn drawings I've seen.
Seems like a lot of people want barns and big additions and garages lately.
That's okay.
Yeah, they do, that's true, yeah, additions and stay.
We appreciate that you want the stay.
Yeah.
I mean, looking at the yard...
How many, how many kids is he going to have?
No, 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 no.
Another one, you're going to get in trouble.
Listen, he's not going to get in trouble with the other guy, are you?
We're agreed, we've already said it two, and that's it.
No, I was just saying, with the, with the layout of the house and the property, you know, being uneven, you know, that looks like the best possible spot to land it. For it to be functional, I mean, if you're going to get your boat in and out of there, you wouldn't want it behind the house, where you have to do like weird...
Exactly, drive all along.
Drive all, yeah.
And he could, he could put what he wants there, he's just looking for a little bigger...
Right.
Than the 150 square feet, so that's really what the special part is, is just the size.
Yeah.
Yeah.